Call the meeting order, please. Call roll.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Here.
Ms. Collins.
Here.
Dr. McFadden.
Here.
Mr. Monk.
Here.
Mr. Rickman.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
A call has been established. Next on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Next on the agenda are citizens' comments. This is the portion where you, the citizens of the Mount Clemens Community School District, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you come to the mic, state your name and address. Be mindful, you have three minutes in which to make your inquiries, and you may not receive a particular response to your inquiries this evening. Last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments. Second call, citizens' comments. Last call, citizens' comments. Seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda, action items. Item five, consent agenda. Under the item five, consent, action item five A, approval of the minutes of one. The December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Committee of the Whole Workshop, five A two, approval of the minutes of the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Item five B, approval of bills for payment. B one, November payments to vendors. Action item under the consent agenda, item five C, new hires. One kindergarten teacher, Marco Stepkovich. C two, secondary LEA teacher, Erin Bryant. C three, fourth grade teacher, Karen Hoff. C four, middle school basketball coach, Micah Johnson. C five, JV head basketball coach, Ray Bethay. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move to accept the consent agenda as mentioned.
Moved by Member Monk to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk.
Yeah.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on, excuse me, next on the agenda, item six, Business Committee, six A, Seminole Academy Building Renovations. Mr. Superintendent.
I'm going to put to Mrs. Dawes.
I was looking for a recommendation from Partners and Architects' presentation to you to approve Quadrate as the construction for the Seminole renovation project.
You're looking for a recommendation, did I hear you say?
Yes.
Isn't the recommendation that go?
That's a recommendation, looking for approval.
So the recommendation is to award the contractor, Quadre?
Quadrate.
Quadrate?
Yep.
The chair would entertain a motion relative to Agenda Item Six, Seminole Academy Building Renovations. The recommendation is to award the contractor, Codre? Quadrate. Quadrate.
Quadrate.
Quadrate.
Yep.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker to approve Quadrate as the contractor for the Seminole Academy Building Renovations.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
I do. Mr. President, I see that we put that contingency that we spoke about at the workshop.
Yes.
I do see that.
Yep.
Okay.
I think that seven percent is a contingency at seven percent.
Is that the percentage? I know it's a hundred and sixteen thousand.
Yes.
That's about seven, eighty percent, yeah. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Additional questions, comments concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes. Motion carries.
Item seven, Superintendent's, I guess it's Superintendent's comments, or nope, Superintendent's report. Under A, seven A, Parent Advisory Committee, A one, Ashley Granadas. Mr. Superintendent.
Should I, if I want to amend and add something to mine, is this the time to do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I would like to, I would like to add an amendment to my section, to bring a recommendation to the board about my ability as the superintendent to go into negotiations and separation agreements, and I'll elaborate when I get to that.
Superintendent is requesting to amend the agenda to add under item seven, the Superintendent's report to the Superintendent's ability to go, enter into.
Negotiations.
Negotiations.
Separation agreements.
To enter into negotiation for a separation agreement. So he's asking to amend the agenda to have that on the, to add that to the agenda for discussion.
Mr. President, I move to, to support, to move the agenda for separation for the superintendent.
Support.
Moved by Member Monk to, excuse me, add to the agenda, the Superintendent's ability to negotiate, is that what you said?
Negotiate.
Negotiate a separation agreement. Seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Motion carries. The agenda has been amended, adding that to Agenda Item Seven A, number two. Mr. Superintendent.
Okay, so I'll go back to Advisory Committee then first.
Yes, yes.
Good evening, Board, Community. Our Teacher Union President over there. The first recommendation I have is for the board to approve the appointment of one of our parents, Ashley Granados. She's a, you have her bio in front of you there. She's one of our parents of six here in the district. I mentioned this before, earlier meeting, one of the things that we have lacked in, from the county perspective, was having a member, one of our parents be a member of the district-wide, county-wide Parent Advisory Committee. It's called PAC. You have the information there in front of you of what it is, what they do. They pretty much act as a liaison for special needs students and advocate, representing our district. And so, we were one of maybe about six or five districts that didn't have somebody representing us. And so, Mrs. L. and I recruited Mrs. Granados, again, who is a parent of six students here in our district, and, you know, been through some, educating her of what that role takes and what it is, and she so graciously is willing to step up and fulfill that role for us. So, my recommendation to the board is that you adopt and, or support the approval in appointing Ashley Granados as our Parent Advisory Committee representative for the county.
You heard the recommendation. The chair would entertain a motion relative to Agenda Item Seven A one, the appointment of Ashley Granadas as the parent, to the Parent Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Member Walker to approve Ashley Granadas to be appointed to the Parent Advisory Committee, seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
The Parent Advisory Committee, is that, is this a yearly Parent Advisory position?
Yes. That's my understanding that it is for the MISD.
So they'll be somebody appointed every year?
Yep.
Okay. And is there like a nominating thing that they do? Is there?
It's more of a, because it's hard, I think it's hard for them to get parents, it's more of a recruitment. To try to find somebody who can act and be a liaison and advocate for special needs students from each district. So I think it's more of a recruitment than it is a.
Recruitment by the school?
Yeah.
Okay.
By the district superintendent.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item seven A two.
Next on the recommendation list from the Superintendent is the, I was contacted by the library, I learned a lot through.
No, 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 no.
Oh, sorry, where are we at?
We're on A two, where you amended.
Got you. I put that down, I put that on the C on my sheet. No, A two. Let me back up. The negotiation of separation agreements, the Superintendent is requesting that the, the board allow, the recommendations that the board allows me to negotiate separation agreements for employee, employees of the district for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year to start, and that could be something else that we can explore as we move forward.
So the recommendation is to allow the Superintendent to enter in negotiations for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, negotiation of a separation of staff?
Yes.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Member McFadden to approve the Superintendent's ability to negotiate separation with employees for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. It was seconded by Member Walker. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
Is this just to negotiate, or is this to carry out as well?
To enter into, to carry out, negotiating and enter into, carry out separation agreements.
Is there a policy on, on doing negotiations for separation by the Superintendent?
I don't think that there is one either way that clearly defines that, and so that's why I'm bringing it to us to.
Is this something that should be brought to policy and modified it from the policy?
No, that's, not from my investigating and research from other superintendents, no. This should be brought this way.
So, so this is just like a yearly thing that you're going to enter into then?
Yes.
Okay.
I forgot the number of policy, but the number of policy actually gives the Superintendent the authority to bring to the board to get approval to go into. That policy, I looked at it, that policy is skipping out, the number.
Right.
But that policy states out that it gives the Superintendent the power to do that.
Yeah, I knew there was something in there about that, but I didn't know if it had mentioned.
Gotcha.
Separation.
Can't remember what the number either. Won't even last.
Yeah, I can't, yeah.
I've been looking at so many.
It's in a minute, it's up on administration in the policy manual.
And part of the responsibility of the Superintendent is to bring recommendation regarding staffing. So, in terms of us approving the Superintendent the ability to negotiate a separation throughout the course of the school year, I believe he already, he, Superintendent already has that power, because the board hires one person, and we put the rest of the responsibility into the court of the Superintendent. So if there's policy that supports that, that's great, but I don't believe it needs to be in policy. That's part of the responsibility that we empower the Superintendent with. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Oh, your time was up to make the comments.
This is just, this is just administration?
I'm sorry?
Is this just administration? Is this for just administration? Like?
Administrators, you mean?
Huh?
Oh, you mean to negotiate that. I guess it gives me the ability to do it with, with any employee, so it's not specific to.
Okay.
Enroll.
Okay. Even like through EduStaff and things like that, right?
Well, EduStaff is, that's, there is no negotiation for EduStaff, because they're a third party, so we, that's just a determination I can make for, as a.
As a recommendation to EduStaff?
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. So these are people basically that sign contracts with Mount Clemens?
Yes.
Employees of the.
Employee.
I was trying to get a understanding.
Employees, yeah.
Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, on my agenda, Mr. Superintendent, I have seven B.
This is your board meeting, so.
You said yours said C. I don't have a C up under the Superintendent's.
Because you don't have a blue ink pen.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Earl is very particular about his agenda. He's very literal, too.
Don't, I don't like surprises. I'm not going to break surprises. I don't like.
I'm with you.
So, item B, Mr. Superintendent.
I do have a B.
Yes, sir.
Item B, I learned through this process, it's just a recommendation to the board that our involvement with the, the local, our library here, to appoint a new, I guess they had a board member step down, so it's to appoint a new board member, Stephen Gravlin, who they are asking that this board approves and takes that as a recommendation to appoint Stephen Gavin as a new board member for the Mount Clemens Library.
So moved.
It's moved by Member McFadden to.
Support.
Approve Steve Gravlin's appointment to the Mount Clemens Library Board, the appointment of the school district.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
I have a question about people that we are approving. Is there a way to have them come and address the board before approving?
Oh, board members? You mean like for this board?
When we're approving like people from the library and things like that, to have them come in front of the board, to just hear from them, maybe see them?
Yeah, I was asking a lot of questions, too, because this is a new process for me, but I guess this is not new for the board. They've been doing this a long time. I don't know what traditionally it's been. I don't.
Traditionally, they have not come to the board for an interview or introduction. It's just, sometime we have more than one name, sometime we only have one name. And the recommendation is presented to the board for the board's person that the board is sending to serve on the library board. And so, I never recall anybody coming before the board to introduce themselves or speak on why they want to serve on the library board. Most of the time, it's hard of us, it's hard for us to find people to put on boards like this. A lot of people just don't, don't want to get involved in stuff.
Yeah, well, not only, not only the library, I think we appoint somebody to the Cable Commission to also, and that's the same situation.
Right.
For the Cable Commission. Is there anything else?
We appoint three, and the city appoints three or something.
Yeah, totally, something like that, yeah.
It's just, for me, it's, you know, you don't know this person, you never met this person or anything like that, so it's like you're, you're approving them without even, even really knowing, like you see words on here, but you don't really know them, so.
Okay.
We just take the recommendation of the Superintendent.
Yeah, and, and, so I've had that conversation. So what I, because I didn't know, the process was new to me, I responded back until I was like, oh, I found out that this happens normally. But I did respond back and ask questions about this person from the director, because I thought that was my role. So he and I have had that dialogue.
I got you.
Yeah.
I have no questions, qualms, or about Stephen Gravlin's character, et cetera, et cetera, his ability. He served, I served with Steve on his board for twelve years. He's a retired Lieutenant Colonel, upstanding citizen supporter, staunch supporter of the district. So I have no problems with, with supporting the recommendation.
And I did make the motion, and I served with Steve Gravlin also. He's the one who taught me policy. So I know Steve's ability, I know Steve's drive, and I know his heart. When I seen his name as being nominated for this position, I was like, absolutely. He is top-notch.
Good to know.
Yeah, top-notch.
Good to know. Thanks for sharing this.
Yeah, and actually, I, when I first ran on the board, I actually ran for his seat, because he was one of the ones that was up for reelection. I got a chance to talk to Gravlin one-on-one. Yeah, he's, he's a.
Okay. Well, thanks for sharing.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Motion carries. So, your B, three or two.
He gonna let you down. He gonna let you down.
Or do you have a C?
Right, I'll go say it. Amendmented Agenda Item, I put that as.
I got you, okay.
I put it at the bottom, but.
I got you.
Moving on, I'm done. Well, I'll be back, but.
Okay.
I'm done for that.
Next on the agenda, informational items. Item eight, information out of the Business Committee, eight A, financial reports. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the financial reports?
I have one question on a financial report, and I don't know how I overlooked it prior to the finance meeting. It looks like we paid tele speech nineteen thousand dollars. I've yet to see a contract for that. And if I remember correctly, that did not start off well at the beginning of the year, so I'd like more information on how many hours we've paid for, for the service. I'd also really like to see a contract on that, because if I did the math correctly, it's, that's an excessive dollar amount to be paying for short-term service.
And that was a tele speech on the bills that you see?
It was paid on November sixteenth.
Okay.
That's the speech pathologist that is utilized online?
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be under the curriculum and the budget for curriculum?
Well, we, I'll try to, just a little memory, because I remember us talking about this extensively. We've had that position posted, you know, we've been trying to hire somebody in-house and wasn't able to. And then that's when, we got this agreement with St. Mary's, and then a whole lady came to our board meeting, because we were supposed to be providing services for their students too legally and ours, and so we ended up having to go with this company and contract out. Ideally, for none of us, having somebody virtual or tele for that service, but you can't find anybody anywhere.
Yeah, it's hard.
It's very hard right now, across everywhere. And so that's how we got into it, and we were behind, so that person, I'm sure.
Yeah, it just seems, it sticks out to me as a very high dollar amount, so I'd like to see a contract there.
I know that it was for two months, but I'll have to pull the invoice, and I don't know that there is a contract. It's on an as-need basis.
I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak, but I remember me going back and forth with our Director of Special Services about trying to find different companies who had the best rating, eighty dollars an hour. There were some numbers, we kind of threw around and talked about that their standard, and so, we can get that. We can get that.
Any additional questions regarding the financial reports? Item eight B, contract listings. Are there any questions regarding the contract listings? Any additional questions regarding the contract listings? We talked a lot, a lot of these issues, items in depth at the work, work session on last Thursday, so. Audience, people watching might say, nobody has any question. We've already discussed all of this stuff in, to nauseam at the workshop, so we wouldn't be doing it, at nauseam during, during the regular meeting.
It was a long one.
Seeing or hearing none, item nine, Superintendent's comments. Mr. Superintendent.
Now we get to the nauseam.
You're up.
All right.
Hold on, I got it right here. You got three minutes.
I've already, I've already been threatened by employees, by time, timeline, so.
I haven't threatened you at all.
If something happens to me tomorrow, y'all know, just start over there. Somebody's not feeling too well today, and made some threats. So I'm gonna go fast, but if you got any questions, please ask. So just some updates and overall things, some of the things I want to, I'm just gonna go. Just a few updates, and you've heard some of these things already, keep you in the loop. Working, a lot of great things happening, positive energy still moving forward that we're excited about. I've had a great meeting with AAA. We're working on, if not this year, by next year, fingers crossed, some services that they will bring to us that will provide free driver's training for our students.
Nice.
Yep, so, so we are in conversations with that, and looking forward to the potential for our babies, for our kids.
Do you mean providing the cars and instructors?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, so we are still like, just in the beginning stages of it. They have money, and how, where, whatever that's going to end up, I'm going to try to get them to pay, pay it off, so. If that's.
Nice.
Or in a company that brings their cars, or, so. I'll keep you updated on that, on the progress. Next up, just to keep you in the loop with, I had another good meeting with Mr. Sutherland. Doug Sutherland is, if you know or don't know him, is a historian from Mount Clemens and a former employee in a number of roles, but has been around a long time, does a lot with the Athletic Alumni Association. And so, he and I had a meeting. He keeps educating me about some of the history here in Mount Clemens, and he, he was, wants to have our Athletic Director, Mr. Garland, be a part of that committee moving forward. So, when we get to talking about district things and identifying people for the Hall of Fame, and just having somebody from the district to represent currently on that. So, our Athletic Director, Mr. Garland, has been in conversation with him, is going to fulfill that role, to kind of make that connection back to some of the legacy that's been around here. And also, from my, from my end, to ensure that we are all on the same page, you know, as we move forward with who's going in the Hall of Fame, the criteria and establishing those things. So we're excited about that.
You mean Athletic Coordinator?
Athletic Coordinator, yeah, Mr. Garland, our Athletic Coordinator. Next up, the, the marketing team. We have been getting together, meeting, getting ready for our school of choice window opens, as you all have heard before, January thirteenth through the sixth, through the January twenty-sixth. That'll be the second portion for our blended count. That's, we've been talking about marketing strategies, probably going to run a one-week kind of radio ad. We have Melers and our whole little thing that'll go out and postings that we are preparing for. So, I will keep you abreast of our strategies and the things we are doing to try to recruit more students. Some other great news is, we just got word today that through our partnership agreement, there were some grant funds, 21H grants, grant monies that are new funds to us, never had them before. And it's because we're in that partnership agreement, and there was a big wish list that we put in that grant. a big wish list that we put in that grant. And we're glad to say that we got approved for probably almost everything we wished for, very close, in a total of, from human resources to supplemental services and different things like that, in a estimate of about a half million dollars.
Nice.
Grant funds coming in, so. One of the, like, for example, I know we rolled into there for a staff and student recruitment specialist to help out, as well as a college and career coach to help out. So all of those, a lot of those things, almost everything we wished for got approved. Is that right, Doug?
Yeah.
So more to come on that, we'll keep, go ahead.
That grant money is that for this year, what's the?
Two years.
Two years, nice. Okay, so, two years?
Yeah, a lot of the items, you could either have applied for one year or two years, and we applied for everything for two years.
Gotcha.
Most everything got approved for the two years.
Okay, great job, guys.
Shout out to David, Teresa, and Cindy, our grant writer, and everyone who's worked on making those things happen, because those are, you know, we just, people, you know, a lot of times, people don't know where, or the work that goes in behind the scenes to make these things happen, and we just have job positions pop up or resources pop up, but there are people working tirelessly behind the scenes and doing the things that I'm not crazy about doing, and writing grants and doing other research. And so shout out to that team for pulling that stuff together in a timely matter and making it happen. So more resources and opportunities to come for our kids in this community. All right, we're not gonna be very extensive on this. Nope, not yet, I gotta ways to go. This is a, I'm gonna be very brief with this topic.
You kind of, you know, you contradicted yourself.
Yo, I know.
Okay.
Because I'm getting ready to talk about the bond update from the conversation from the workshop. So here's the update. We were kind, during our workshop, we talked about the date. There was a date that Plant Moran.
Go, no-go.
Mentioned. So the bottom line is, I'm gonna give you the quick version, and we, again, there's no decisions being made, this is for updates. We need to go before 2026 in order to avoid a mileage dropping where we can miss out on a mill decrease.
Before 2026?
Yes.
So any election, you are 2026?
Is before we, yes.
Okay.
The, Plant Moran has been talking and communicating with partners in architecture, PFM, and everybody that's working on, that'll be working on our grant. They say our optimal time is, and I kind of, I don't really want to say this because I think somebody's gonna hit me in the head right here and say, I told you so, but they think our optimal time is to go May 25, May 2025. Excuse me, superintendent's report, please.
I still ain't said a word.
And going in that time, not just because of, not just for the sake of passing, but that is beneficial, tied into there too, but going at that time, we will be able to attract another $6 million as well. So more money for the project and the bond itself going during that time.
So with that 2025, I'm looking, I'm looking at the actual paper, so that puts us in that, from May, start at May 6, 2025, December, it's talking about that timeframe right there?
Yes. So, but let me back that up. Going for that May 2025 election.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, so, and then the third thing would be, and we can have this discussion before, when we get closer to that date. So my thing was, so when do we need to secure Plant Moran then, so we can have enough time and not be back behind that? And that was by April 2024, so we can have that 12-month to get going.
Yep.
So you, that'll come back around when we get to that point.
Okay.
All right, that was good.
It's dust that, you know, comes out, you know, and not from outside, it's from being here. Wow, being around, you're wild.
I know he's gonna say that, I know he's gonna say that.
Thank you, President.
Just keep it moving.
Keep it moving. A few building updates. I asked the principals to share some things that they would like to, that they'd like to share. Seminole is sharing about, they had Kensington Church donated over 200 wrapped gifts to Seminole students for Christmas, and so we're very grateful to that Kensington Church. The state of Michigan provided students with hats and gloves, scarves and socks on the 7th, as you need, as you know, the needs of our community. So that's, those things are huge. Session two of our after-school tutoring is underway at Seminole, and this is something that I kind of just sent over there, and we're kind of, and we're making it happen. Ms. Vetho has talked to the teacher, and we have a substitute teacher. So there's a STEM opportunity called Little Inventors through the county, and that our kids are gonna be able to compete in that challenge that they work with engineers, I think from the UK, they'll do a design of something on a napkin. One of those designs will get selected, and then they'll bring it to life and engineer it, and so they can win an award. There's five award, which I'll keep you updated on this Little Engineers, Little Inventors Challenge. But they, that's gonna be for fourth grade at Seminole. Secondary, boys and girls basketball season is underway. Our, we have our boys team, JV team, our boys, varsity and JV, and our girls team are all competing and bringing a lot of fans in ruckus and competing like crazy, and so we're proud of all of them. We, they wanted me to invite you all out to some games. If you haven't been, we can always use volunteers, we got concessions going, and it's some great time, great energy to, to see the kids on the, you know, on that stage and perform. So if you get a chance, any of these things, you're more than welcome and invited into the buildings, into some of these events. So please stop by, they, they wanted me to mention that. Middle school basketball is joining, has joined the PAL League, we talked about that before, so that's getting started up. We talked about the potential of having girls. We didn't get enough interest in the girls-only team, so we are gonna offer co-ed and girls' opportunity to join this team as well. So that, to fulfill and give girls' opportunity. Since they didn't, we didn't have enough interest for their own team, we are inviting them to join that team. This is really exciting, too, and we walked through yesterday, and they were practicing. We have a girls' middle school, not girls, a middle school cheer team.
Very nice.
So I thought that was pretty awesome, and it might have been like 15 of them yesterday. They were practicing in the hallway, and it's just for middle school, so that was pretty powerful and exciting for those middle school kids. Usually, middle school doesn't get cheered, you know how that can go sometimes, so. And it's another opportunity for our cheerleaders as well. This is something we're very proud of, and we're gonna try to make this a big deal and get some media attention through a partnership with the Kingdom Community Center and United Way. The secondary campus is gonna be opening up a parent resource center, and that resource center is gonna provide opportunities for our parents, a place for our parents to come and, again, have resources there, information, computer access, so they can surf the internet job, you know. And then ultimately, we want to have workshops for our parents that are held there. So I'll bring you more information as it grows and grows, but I will let you know when that grand opening is gonna be. United Way is donating a lot of resources to make that happen, and so it might be a great opportunity for you all to be there for the grand opening. And when we get that locked in, I'll make sure I get it to you. One of the things I'm most proud of and very excited, Mr. Lavender and I had a meeting, and the high school principal and counselor are involved as well. We, I talked to you about the opportunity for dual enrollment with Wayne County Community College District, and we had a conversation yesterday. So starting in the second semester, we're working out the kinks now, how to build it into the daily schedule. Starting second semester, every student's gonna have the opportunity to, actually, we're trying to build it into where they have no choice, and they're taking a one-credit class during the day. So by the end of second semester, there's a potential for every kid in this building to have at least one credit to pilot that opportunity, and it's free. So we're very excited about that opportunity for our kids. And, you know, the ideal is, and the hope is, that they may get intrigued about college, if not, you know, and just get some experience, and it's a general entry class. And as we gain that, that interest, then we can continue to build it and eventually become a, eventually have those opportunities for our kids, three credit classes all the way through, where they can start in ninth grade and eventually leave with an associate's would be ideal. So they have been nothing but helpful to making it happen. We are planning some field trips to get our kids to their campuses, just to see and go and tour, and break them up by grade level, so that's coming. And last but not least, Mrs. L. Just, we wanted to wish everybody a happy holiday season, and I know we got some goodies up here, and so we have some gifts for you, or a gift for you, that, just a little token of saying thanks. You wanna help her out up there? And that we appreciate you all as a board for supporting us and making things happen. Next month is Board Appreciation, so we'll do have some, maybe some students do some presentations, because I know we want to hear from kids more and see kids more, so. But this is a little holiday thank you from, from us. And that's, that's it.
I don't smell. I could have had it, you know, for order, you know, by the time you started your comments.
Chanola?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Chanola?
Open them up just a little, something.
Wait, well, okay.
I do have a, I do have a question on the dual enrollment. So, and you can bring this another time, but how do they do college assessments when they're in high school doing dual enrollment? How does that work? Because generally, when you go into college, you have an assessment.
Thank you so much.
From what I remember. Assessment of interest?
Yeah, so an assessment, like a math assessment and an English assessment that would do your initial associate program, like placement?
From what I.
Ordering the media.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's Christmas, Earth.
Should ask some questions.
I'm sorry.
You got questions?
I kind of got a question. What I recall, if you know it down in that corner there, pull it out, because your initials are on there, this monogram.
Yeah, thank you so much.
No problem. Yep. You're welcome.
Beautiful.
I love it. I journal all the time, you know, you follow me.
I know the exact spot, this is gonna be on the show.
Right in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So the few people in here that do follow me on social media, I regularly journal, and I post about journaling all the time, so this will definitely.
I knew that. But thank you, though. We can talk some more about that.
Yeah.
Get some details. Did you hear our question, Doug?
Okay.
That's it for me.
You're ready?
You got a pizza?
I should have ordered it, because, you know, it could have been here five minutes ago. And you were gonna be short.
I thought I did pretty good today.
I thought you did, too, but we still could have, pizza still could have been here. Next on the agenda is item 10. Before we go to item 10, I request to amend the agenda to add to the agenda the adoption of a proclamation for Georgia Parker. This is the information I sent around to the board. The reason why we didn't put it on the agenda by Friday because just got the information on Sunday about it. Superintendent had talked to me last Wednesday or Thursday, somebody had asked him about a request to put a board passing a proclamation on behalf of Ms. Parker, but we didn't have any information. So once obtaining that information, I was able to put together this proclamation, and I'm asking the board to amend the agenda so we can consider approving the proclamation to Georgia Parker.
Mr. President, I'm moved to amend the agenda to add the proclamation for Mrs. Parker.
Support?
Moved by Member Monk to amend the agenda to add to the agenda the proclamation for Georgia Parker. Second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
And for the agenda, so that will be, that will come as item?
That would be item?
Ten, if everything moves down.
Correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none? Call roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Yes.
You didn't call Ms. Collins.
Yeah. Ms. Collins, I apologize.
I'm paying attention. Motion carries. I passed the resolution, proclamation out to the board, and I'm not gonna go through all of the whereas, but just, I'll start where, excuse me, whereas in 1965, Georgia park, Georgia relocated to Mount Clemens, Michigan, commencing her employment with the Mount Clemens Community School District. She dedicated 22 years of teaching second grade at Christian Clemens School, followed by an additional three years at Washington Elementary School, before retiring from the Mount Clemens Community School Districts in 19, District in 1991, having positively impacted the lives of nearly 1,000 students. And whereby, whereby, upon retirement, Georgia moved to Prosper, Texas, and in 2010, at the age of 80, she achieved the milestone of becoming a published author, author with her autobiographical book, Don't Quit: A Life of Praising and Serving God. Whereas Georgia's presence left an indelible mark on the lives that she touched, and her absence is keenly felt. Therefore, be it resolved that the Mount Clemens Board of Education, on behalf of the Mount Clemens Community School District, acknowledge with gratitude the significant contributions of Georgia Parker. Be it further resolved that at its 20, December 20th, 2020, 2023 meeting, the Mount Clemens Board of Education posthumously approves this resolution as a heartfelt recognition of Georgia Parker's unwavering dedication and lasting impact on the district. Moved by Member Kahoon to approve the proclamation. Second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Are we gonna have this proclamation posted anywhere?
Uh, yes. Also, we're going to send it to her family, because she's having a memorial on January the 6th in Prosper, Texas.
We're gonna make it pretty.
Yeah.
Do we have any pictures of her?
Not in here, but in obituary. Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
With this proclamation, also goes to the newspaper?
Uh, I think it's kind of, you know, her funeral was in December.
I know a lot of people, some people might not know, some people do, some might, you know.
I think there's a fee for putting stuff like this in the paper, I think. Any additional questions, comments regarding the motion on the floor?
If we don't send it in the paper, can we get this to the Alumni Association and let them put it out to the alumni?
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Takes us to agenda item 11, board comments. Mr. Walker?
Thank you. Really looking forward to the home game on Friday for JV and varsity. Great things happening in our district, as said by Mr. Roper tonight. Also looking forward to the continued strategic planning start of next year. Also, happy holidays to our staff and students. The break will go by fast and get back to school and get ready for finals in the January, and everyone have a happy holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mrs. Kahoon?
I'm glad you went with Mr. Walker first.
I saw him over there in deep thought.
Thank you. Just a few things. Superintendent, all the posts I'm seeing about the great stuff happening in Mount Clemens, I'm loving it. I love seeing every single post, I'm just, just fills my heart. The only thing that I would add is, do we have a dedicated person or people or committee that can focus on really taking pictures at the games and at the different events happening, so that way we really kind of capture everything? And if we don't, you know, can we, can we form something, you know, similar to a yearbook committee, I think? Um, and if we don't, um, you know, can we, can we form something, you know, similar to a yearbook committee, I think?
In, 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 uh, process.
Okay, wonderful. That's really great to hear, cause showcasing the great things happening in Mount Clemens is, you know, all that. I think it's a lot of the advertising that we are missing. And, you know, when you have that type of advertising, you have to spend less in the advertising of radio and things like that. So, um, I just love that, um, everybody's pulling together, uh, um, at this district now. It feels like a well-oiled machine for the most part, um, that everybody's just kinda doing their thing and they understand the groove now. And, and my hope is, is that, um, with this next push for enrollment, that we see another increase. Um, that's my hope and then my, my, also my prayer. Um, I appreciate the bond update. Thank you for that. It was very helpful. Um, I, I've been thinking about it since, since we did that. And, you know, my fear was that you guys were gonna be pushed really hard and, and you guys are already maxed. So, um, I didn't, I didn't wanna see any step back. And so I'm grateful that you were able to share that with us. Um, thank you Kensington Church. Um, I, the, the little STEM inventors, that sounds like an amazing program. I cannot wait to see about it and hear about it more. And the cheer team, um, I'm very, very happy to hear about those things. Like so many great things happening here is just, just fills my heart. And I just wanna wish everybody at the board table and, um, anybody that watches this, a very Merry Christmas and a very blessed New Year. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Kahoon. Mr. Monk?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna try to make this quick. It's not like Miss Roper.
Ain't gonna be long, y'all.
Right, 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 right. Well, first of all, I wanna, uh, just say thank you and I'm gonna try to go. Um, thank you to Ms. Kahoon for these lovely chocolates. I've already got into a couple of them already. So you, you want some out of me, just give me some chocolate. I'm good to go. Um, thank you to the, uh, Superintendent Financial Services for the cookies. As you see, they're, I've already ate them, that's why I needed the water. Thank you. And Mr. Lavender, thank you, Mr. Lavender, Mr. Lavender for all your hard work. Um, thank you Patrick for being behind the camera. Appreciate you. Uh, we wanna thank our community partners, all of them. Um, thank the superintendent for all your hard work. This board made a great choice in you. I wasn't here, I wasn't part of that. I voted for this board to go into that, but they made a great choice. So keep up the hard work, Doc. You're doing a great job right now. Um, thank you to our union president and all the union members. Okay, good to see you. All right. Uh, and well, uh, thank you to all the, uh, employees of the district, um, from all facets, from, from, from A to Z. And thank you to all the students and the families, um, of this district. Because without the students and the family, there would be no district. Um, you know, when I think about the holidays, you really wanna, you know, uh, we made a pact in my family that starting, it started two years ago. It may not be every holiday, but Christmas, we put our eyes on each other and we do a Christmas brunch at my house. So all the family comes, because everybody's got things to do, everybody's got places to go. But at least one day out of the year, we put eyes on each other, just to make sure that, you know what? I see you. So, um, I would, you know, suggest that to everybody, you know, in this district.
What time we going then? I know. You got an invitation though.
To, uh, you know, just put, yes. We, we gonna put the other invites out also. I heard you, Earl. Um, but definitely put eyes on family. Um, to me, and I think, you know, I would, uh, be supported on this, there's nothing like family. Nothing like it. None like family. So, um, and I don't know if I said this to anybody, but we are expecting our first grandchild at the end of March. So we are finally gonna be grandparents. So, yeah, thank you, thank you. Um, just wanna say Merry Christmas to everybody. And since we in the giving mood, um, okay, Ms. L, you're up. Um, the bag with the, uh, snowmen's on it is the superintendent and that other bag is yours.
Thank you so much.
And Mr. Superintendent, I and Earl and Dave know this about me. I like to put my money where my mouth is. I've always done.
It's a bag of money?
Yes. I've, I've always done this. I've always done it since my first, and Earl to tell you, since my first dealing with the district and just sponsoring stuff. When I coached basketball, I actually paid for uniforms, the whole nine yards. So if you guys will kindly, uh, open those up, Ms. L and Superintendent, I believe in branding. And I've been believing, and I, and my, my motto is that when you look good, you work good.
Uh-oh.
Um, and that's, and I'm going to. And I'm going to extend this out, Mr. Superintendent. I'm going to extend this out to all you administrators.
So I just need to get their sizes?
For everyone, um.
It's medium right here.
Yep. And, uh, so, and this will be, this will be my donation. Um, gonna make that clear and the district is not paying for this. So I don't, people, ah, this is a donation, uh, out of my company that I own. Um, and I just want to, uh, do that for you guys, because, you know, a lot of good things is happening. You know, and when you guys go to these meetings over at the ISD and you're meeting with fellow people and all of that, you know, me personally, I want y'all to look good and represent Mount Clemens. So I appreciate that.
This get worn every day over a shirt.
So, um, and with that, um, I just wanna wish all my fellow board members and everybody in this district, everybody a happy, happy, merry, merry Christmas and be safe in the new year. And I will see you guys on the other side. Mr. President, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Walker?
Well, I really don't know how to follow any of that up, so.
You gotta have a bag.
I know. Thank you for the beautiful journal.
You're welcome.
The cookies, the candy. Um, there are a lot of wonderful things happening here. And it's, this has been a great meeting and we are headed in a great direction. And I have nothing else to add to what everybody else said. So have a blessed and beautiful holiday season. Merry Christmas. Stay safe. Enjoy your family.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Ms. Collins?
Uh, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet as well. Um, there are a lot of great things happening in the district. Um, I wanna say thank you to all of the organizations and private families that have adopted the, our families for the holidays so that they can enjoy a Christmas, um, filled with gifts. Um, I won't name all the organizations, cause I don't wanna miss anyone. Um, I also wanna say come out Friday night and enjoy our home basketball game. Um, it's, it's definitely a treat to watch them play. The energy in the gym is fantastic. Um, and I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and enjoy your families. And if you don't have family, enjoy your friends.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Dr. McFadden?
You know, man, very quick, short words. So thank you, Mr. Monk, for that, because you talk a lot. But anyway, I appreciate you just, just the same. Uh, I wanna thank two individuals that put their name in the hat to step up to the plate. I wanna thank Ashley Gornados Moreno. And I also wanna thank Lieutenant Colonel Retired Stephen Gravlin. Those two individuals, I wanna give a lot of thanks out to, because stepping up to the plate, not too many people doing it. So this year I wanna say, or this year I wanna say thank you to everybody, but to those two individuals, thank you. Um, with that, happy holidays, be safe, God bless, and, um, see you next year.
I was short. I was short. All right. That wasn't, that wasn't.
No, he didn't, Doc.
You didn't hear when yours went off. It wasn't as loud as this one. No, I'm serious. I would first open by saying kudos to Mr. Walker. On, uh, last Tuesday or last Friday, uh, at the, at the home game against Clintondale. Um, somehow, some way, Mr. Walker got recruited to be the official bookkeeper. Now, hold on, hold on, hold on, this, I'm, I'm telling the story. Let me, let me get to the punch part. Let me get to. He had no clue, uh, what to do, had never did it before. I asked him, did you do it before? He said, no. I said, okay, I will help you the best I can. And just so happened, the, uh, scorer from, her name is Kim from Clintondale. Known Kim for twenty-five years, back when we used to play Clintondale and remember her. And I asked him, asked her, could, you know, she help, help him out, you know, best she can? And so kudos to Mr. Walker. The, after he, uh, got his footing and started to understand that you don't put everything in the first quarter. And you gotta check everybody in when they come in and, and into the game. And you do the running score on the side. Uh, by second half, uh, he was, uh, sharp and ready to go and, and, and did the books. And also, he was at a dis, double disadvantage, because.
He didn't have a pen.
When you do the books, there's usually the visitor's side on one side and the home team on one side. And they sit together like this. Well, whoever set the book up for, they didn't set it up right for Mr. Walker. So he had one team on one side and the other team on the other side. So he's going back and forth like this and he's never did it before. So, uh, he, you know, he was double. But, uh, he, um, you know, he stepped up to the plate and got the job, job done. And, uh, uh, he, he might be an expert right now. So, you know, at least if he's called upon again, he, he, you know, he knows the ins and outs of, of it. So thank you to Mr. Walker, cause that was, you are the official, you were the official scorer in a game that was a three-point game. Uh, very exciting game. Uh, renewed an old rivalry, uh, with Clintondale. Uh, that's the first time we played Clintondale since we got out of the MAC some years ago. Cause the MAC wanted, you know, some demands upon us. And then the MAC sorta kinda did us wrong. They wouldn't allow people to schedule us. Um, so we didn't, weren't able to schedule Clintondale or New Haven or teams that we usually had a rivalry with because of some MAC politics. But that's eased up over, over the time. And we had a rivalry with Clintondale and like Ms. Collins alluded to, it was a packed house. Uh, it was a great game. It went, went almost down to the wire, fifty-six to fifty-two, I think it was, fifty-six to fifty-three or something like that. Really exciting game. And by those come out to our future, um, Lady Bathers and Battling Bathers home game right here at the Clem Gym. I like to say thanks, thanks to those, particularly during this time of the season, that helped those who are less fortunate. I say it's good to see extracurricular activities, uh, in the middle school. That gives those, those young people something to look forward to. So that means, one, you gotta keep your grades up. Or two, get your grades up so you can be eligible to participate. Uh, good luck to the Bathers, Battling Bathers and Lady Bathers. And once again, cheerleaders and all, keep those grades up so you, so you stay eligible. Because you are on a team sport and you agree to be a part of the team. And being a part of that team is keeping that team whole. And keeping that team whole mean you have to keep your grades up to stay eligible. So keep, you know, keep up the good work in the classroom and, uh, on the competition and volleyball, basketball, cheerleading, uh, whatever, whatever it is. To the staff, students, parents, community, uh, enjoy the break. Be safe, stay healthy, have a happy holiday. And we look forward to seeing you back here in twenty-twenty-four, fired up and ready to go. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by member Walker to adjourn, seconded by member Walker. Call roll please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Kahoon. Thank you, Ms. Dawes. Thank you. Uh, since, um, member Monk, you know, gave the superintendent the present, I'm gonna give him a silver nugget. Yes. The motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at seven thirty-five PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.